All right, we need to order of comments from the public. Any comments at this time?
George, Donald Favre, 61 Chatting Street. I know the bike path has been an issue and a thorn in a lot of people's side, but I have a question as it relates to in front of my house and all of that area. I just like some clarification on this proposed bike path. I hear a lot of rumors, you hear a lot of different versions of what's going to take place, why the bike path, who does it benefit, the cost. Do the village taxpayers have a say as to, no, we don't want it, yes, we do want it? Let me just go through this first.
There are a lot of good questions, sir.
Matter of fact, at the final end, if I have to email this, I can. I just want to go through this to get it out in the open. If this is such an important agenda, why are the residents not made aware of the project in its entirety? I mean, you know, bits and pieces. What is the anticipated start date and completion date? I've been told that taxpayers have to pay a third of the monies above and beyond the so-called grant funds, and if so, how much will this cost? Why not look at grants that are more worthwhile or for the aging residents in our village versus the bike path? I think that's a good question as well. Now, I've resided there for 37 years on 61 Chatting Street. Proud of my home. You go by it on your bike, you see how Susan and I take good care of that place. My wife and I sit out there every night. And now, in a given week's time, we've probably seen 10 people on that street walking, some kids, a few bicyclists, they're going up to Champlain Plastics. And anybody in their right mind wouldn't go down the golf course, rode on a bike to begin with, but we've never had sidewalks in our street, never have. Now, that's Delaware and just beyond, well, beyond Church Street to the village limits. Now, all of a sudden, we're talking about a bike path. I'm aware that the village has the right of way, and I know that I looked at the map that you have of the distance, 23 feet from the center of the road to the edge of the road, or a total of 60 feet width. Now, that encompasses another 18 and a half feet from the edge of the road onto my property. I know you're not going to abuse that, hopefully, but there's a total of 30 feet in the center of the road forward. That's going to be away from the top of my lawn. On this potential bike path, I'd like to know what you're going to do with the rest of the neighbors up on the end of that street, because they're going to be right at the front porch. Now, my property is 120 feet wide. I'd like to go and add on to my driveway. I don't want to now, because I'm not going to have you people tearing apart once I spend that money. Now, it's interesting to know that with the coenforcement and all that, we, the taxpayers, have to let you folks know what we're doing, adding on, changes, et cetera, et cetera. It encompasses the fees, encompasses a map or whatever. And we're told nothing. You know, I mean, some kind of informational thing to the public, and I basically think this is all wrong. My final comments. I want to commend the village for how the village looks. The village workers have done a tremendous, tremendous job. Now, being complete upper end of Chatting Street, that would be beautiful. Now, my final words about the project. And don't take this personal, per se, to each individual, because some of you probably weren't on the board, but I'm going to say how I feel, and I'm not directing you personally. The bike path sounds to me like the village taxpayers are at the pleasure of the village board. And the reason I'm saying that is, here again, we're not given, even if you put something in with the light bills, or something in the paper, or a formal letter, you know, and today, an ending, I will send an email if you show a request, and I'll defer to that one.
First of all, the answer is, I don't have any answers for you, because it's a Clinton County highway project. It's got nothing to do other than the village going along with it. We have about as much information as you have.
Okay, the village employee came and marched with the storm dreams, but on the following day, the surveyors were there. I didn't go bother the surveyors.
It was the county surveyors. We didn't even know they were here.
So, not to belabor this, but you're saying you have no recourse, and you can't say...
At this point, I don't think so. I think it's a done deal.
So, they can come...
We did vote on it to be part of it.
Right.
And there is a possibility, and I don't know the exact figure, that we would have to put in, but they got $1.2 million from the state of New York to put that bike path in, because nobody else in the state wanted that money.
So, that means they could come in 18 feet into my property, and I have nothing to say about it?
Also, if you wouldn't mind emailing me a copy of that?
Sure.
My email is just admin@rossespointmy.com. And I think you probably should copy Harry McManus.
He'd be happy to hear that.
Because he, I would assume, has more of that information, the county, you know, information. We have not been privy to that, to this date, other than preliminary discussions.
Thank you.
You have some very good questions, but I don't have any answers, sir.
No, I just, you know, for being there all that length of time, you've always slipped here, but it just bothers me to know that somebody can come over and just basically take the front of my lawn.
I don't know if you've seen what the town has already done on the golf course.
Oh, yeah, I've seen it.
Well, that's the bike path.
Right. That only keeps the cars out of the ditch there, but, you know, here again, I don't know how many kids are going to actually use that to go to school.
I doubt it either.
Well, at least it got it out of my system, and you all know. You know, just to clarify things, that all this hearsay and all the other stuff that goes with it is...
Appreciate your comments, though.
Pardon?
I said, I appreciate your comments.
Well, thank you. And I appreciate you listening to me.
How long ago was the meeting held here at the rec center, as I understood it? It was quite a few years ago, right?
I guess so. I only attended one meeting with Harry.
Never heard of him. I don't know why. I wouldn't have checked, no.
I didn't participate either. It was several years ago.
There was a meeting here first of the year, correct, when Harry brought...
Eight months ago?
It was eight months ago. I can't remember. I know it was before I got off the board last time, but I know that's what I'm thinking. It was the first of the year.
Eight months ago, when he brought up the meeting.
Correct.
About the bike path.
About the bike path, because he was there, and he was open to questions.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Also, Arsen just made a good point, is that Mr. McManus has been here on several occasions, and he brought a map and the whole nine yards, and he laid out what their preliminary vision was, but there was not that much detail.
If you stop in the office, I do have a map.
Sure.
So, you can see what it says.
Thank you.
Nobody else, I'll close this section at this time. Not a chance at the end of the meeting. All right, minutes of the previous meeting, regular and special meeting. Regular meeting of August 17th and special meeting of August 20th. You all got copies, board?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of August 17th and the special meeting of August 20th.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, bills. You all got copies of the bills.
Did you find out what that...
Yes, yep. That's compensation, trustee. Is there any additions or...
No, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Take a motion to accept the bills?
How about not accept them, but pay them?
We got to accept them. We made them, we got to accept them.
All right. Got a motion made by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
I have one item. On behalf of St. Patrick's Church, we'd like to thank the village of Ross's Point workers who came to our assistance this week to help us with a water problem at our parish center. They were all very knowledgeable and willing to help out any way they could. Because of this, a job which we thought would be costing time consuming was taken care of at no cost, and we are very grateful. That's from Father Clyde Lewis. There was a water br- I don't know what took place.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, Brian, and your group for fixing it.
Thank you, sir. All right, report of the mayor and trustees. This is not on my agenda, and it should be, but as you people all well know, we have the new digital sign, now it's right. And with the treasurer did some research and has come up with the rules and regulations of the sign. And organizations allowed to locate within the village of Ross's Point, the village of Ross's Point government, schools, churches, and non-for-profit organizations. Types of announcements, community events, fundraisers, meetings, school cathedrants, and emergency notification. Duration of the announcements, community events, 14 days, fundraisers, 14 days, meetings, seven days. Restrictions. The village reserves the right to remove all approved announcements in event of an emergency. Political, sexual, and religious messages and photographs will not be allowed. The village has the right to refuse any message of... I said, no, that's pro-otter, sorry. And on the municipal electronic sign. Requests shall not conflict with village users or municipal records. LED sign message board. How to apply? Apply in writing by filling out the request use form. The form is available at the village office, 139 Lake Street, Ross's Point, New York, and on the village website. And there's a copy of the form on the back. The rec center here is in charge of that sign, and they will take care of your request. And so, I don't see a problem with it, and I'm looking for approval for the board for this.
Approval, that you have to fill all these applications out, which is looking for...
Yeah, yeah. Well, you gotta fill it out, you gotta know what's going to go on.
And then send writing. Make a motion to accept that. That seems like a good form and straightforward.
You may want to read the first paragraph, too, George.
Pardon?
You may want to read the first part of that.
Oh, the first page?
Yeah. The top part?
Read up above, George, second page.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. The following policy and guidelines have been adopted and reviewed by the village board at September 8th meeting, that's tonight. The usage of the municipal electronic LED sign message board located at the Ross's Point Civic Center. All requests are to be made in writing every 72 hours in advance of the current request, unless otherwise approved by the village administrator or mayor, and the guidelines are strictly enforced.
Gary, man.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell. There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. All right. Second thing on my agenda, authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice for a public hearing on local law one amending chapter 112, vehicle and traffic, Marina use of streets. Need a motion that is authorized or published.
Motion to accept?
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Authorize the clerk to publish legal notice for a public hearing on local law two, amending chapter 121, planning board, meeting schedule.
Motion to accept?
This is just so they can change during the...
This is to publish for a public hearing.
I'll second that, so she can publish that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion court carried. Request an executive session to discuss contract notification.
Negotiation.
Yeah, negotiations. Moved by trustee Treadwell, seconded by trustee Martin. Roll call vote. I guess you're a senior, don't you?
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Martin. Trustee Treadwell.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Resolution for budget modification. That is up to the treasurer to explain all this.
Whereas the board of trustees deems advisable to make certain modifications to the 2015-16 village budget, recording the outstanding purchase orders as of May 31st, 2015. Be therefore resolved if the treasurer is authorized and directed to make the following modifications to the village budget for fiscal year 2015-16. Under the general fund, you're going to increase account 599 appropriated fund balance for $5,950 and increase appropriations account 960, $5,950. The sewer fund, we're going to increase appropriated fund balance, account 599.051432, and increase appropriations account 960.051,0432. Resolution shall take effect immediately. The question was put to a roll call vote.
Motion to accept a resolution?
Second that.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Treadwell. Roll call vote, trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Treadwell.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And the last thing on my agenda is the MUA County and Finance Workshop, October 20th and 21st, 2015. We've never had, but we have been recommended that our treasurer should go.
You mean, you can approve it for now, but you don't, they haven't come out with the agenda yet.
Yeah, no, it hasn't yet, but they've come out with the registration form, so...
I guess I'll make a motion to allow Arsen to go to this meeting.
Moved by trustee Treadwell, seconded by trustee Martin. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me. Trustee Martin.
Gene, you want to help me out here a little bit with some of this? The beekeeper discussion, now that was the issue with the beekeeper?
I'll defer to...
In our local laws, we have nothing listed for bees. We have chickens, ducks, goats, we have everything but bees. Therefore, some residents have decided to have bee hives in their backyards. Legally, we can't tell them they can't, because we don't have anything in writing. So, if you're going to put into the local law that we do not allow bees in the village of Ross's Point, we have to go to the people who do have them and give them a reasonable time to find another home for them outside the village. One thing I did find out through the state, those who have bees, you have to prove that their bee is the actual bee that is disturbing the neighbor. Because bees actually, from what we're being told, bees actually attract hornets, and it could be the hornets that are actually bothering the neighbors, not the bees. And some of the beekeepers that we have in the village have actually did what state requires, which is a six-foot tower home, and it makes them fly higher out when they come up. So, literally, I guess like 150 feet after they come out, they start descending, so it's four or five houses over, not the neighbor right next door, from the way a bee operates, from what I'm getting, what I'm being told. So, just keep that in consideration, if those decide to pass law about the bees, we need to give the ones who do have a few of them considerable time to find a home.
My father had bees in the village here for 50 years, which nobody hates bees more than me, but they never bothered us. If you were 50 feet from the hive, you never saw a bee.
And I don't have a problem with it either. Like I said, the state said the hardest thing you're going to have to fight with is with the neighbors, you have to prove that it's that bee that's bothering that neighbor. Can we do that?
I think that was going to be one hell of a thing to try and prove.
Got to dot every bee.
And I'm just telling you what you're up against.
Yeah, it's not really worth the expense of both the lawyer fees to take and...
What's the cause to pass a local law? Carol, you should know.
Pardon?
What's the cause to pass a local law?
Well, it depends on what it is. I mean, you have the process that you have to go through, but depending on how big the law is...
But what exactly is the problem? What is the complaint? I mean, do you think...
We're getting complaints from some of the neighbor residents up off, is it Stewart?
I think it was Edgewater area.
Right, in the Edgewater area, up by Doc Murray's and that area, that there are some bee hives that are back there. I did go look, and they are there, but the neighbors that are adjacent to that property said that they can't even sit outside anymore, because the bees are just swarming all over the place. But, you know, I mean, they have a legitimate excuse, absolutely. If they're being bothered by the bees, then we need to comply with that, too. But again, we have to prove it's the gentleman's bees that they're being bothered by.
I'm not very educated about bees, John. Maybe you can help me out there. Do they do it a month a year, two months a year? I mean, is this this guy's business that he does? I mean, how often do his bees go to the hive? I don't know nothing about...
He's got three hives back there, six feet high.
Right.
I mean, they're like a honeybee. They're...
They go all...
But even after you pass the local law, he's ran all over there anyway.
Well, that's, see, that's the fine line, is that these people who already have it here, you can't technically tell them they got to get rid of them tomorrow?
Yeah, that's right.
You know, it's just like any prior laws that we put into effect, those who, you know, had it in the past are allowed to keep it. So, do you ever solve the problem? Not really.
I live right near the man that has these bees, and I would never, I mean, his backyard's right there, there's no bees around where I am.
But from what I'm being told from the state, it's hornets that attract to those bees, and it could be the hornets that they're having a problem with.
What a surprise to me, seeing hornets. I advise you to fill it in.
I'm just giving you the information.
Got it. All right.
Just don't have really much to do, unless you want to go through the expense of going through the whole local law for...
No, I mean, I'm fine with it. I mean, hey, it's just the guy's business, and that's what I'm asking. He's come for two or three weeks a month, and I mean, if that's what has to happen. I mean, if it was bothering somebody, lending in the house or things...
If you have listened to National News, the bee population in this country is declining and it's becoming a very serious issue, because that's what pollinates your fruits and vegetables.
Sure.
And, you know, I don't know if it was the African bees or the disease they got, but they're losing hive after hive.
George, I would just like to add that the reason it's a topic of discussion was we wanted the individuals who had brought it, excuse me, to our attention to understand that we had researched it and addressed their concern.
Thank you, Gene.
You're welcome.
Okay, next one is announcement of the Fall Fest at the Civic Center. The Ross's Point Civic Center presents the first annual Fall Fest craft slash vendor show. It's going to be September 12th this year. That's going to be starting at 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Ross's Point Civic Center is pleased to announce it, the Fall Fest, okay, go right back to the subject here. Admission is free. Start your holiday shopping early. Merchandise available is going to include jewelry, oils, books, sportswear, baked goods, artwork, knitted and crocheted items, maple products, kitchen items and accessories, spices, dolls, bows, woodworking, and a lot of other stuff. So, if you have any questions, call Richard or Cody at 518-297-5502, extension 311. Next thing on the agenda is discussion of the dog park. I just handed this today for a small piece of property that's out in the back here in the Civic Center.
Correct.
Gene? Few people came to the village, and they want to be able to use that piece of land to be able to use for a dog park. They're going to pay the expense of having the fencing put in and whatever whatnot is needed to make it secure for the dogs to be able to come in, run loose, do their thing, and they're going to clean up after the dogs themselves?
Correct.
They're going to go through the expense in that village property that's not really being used or doing anything? I don't really see where there's too much of a problem with it, as long as we're not liable for any dog fights, bikes, or...
Sure, they're going to be liable in the village, it's going to be liable. I mean, if one dog bites another dog, and then, or if somebody gets a bit on village property...
How's that going to work? Is it a liability?
I would say that this is for informational purposes. Right at this moment, there is some homework that needs to be done with regards to your concerns about the insurance and who would be liable, and whether the people who are involved would need a waiver, need to sign a waiver in the event they want to use, you know, the area.
And did they get...
There are a lot of unknowns. This conversation has been going on for quite some time now, and just this is an update as to where it's at right at the moment.
Can you check, Gene, with other towns or villages that have dog parks?
Right.
See how they get around not get around it, but see how they handle that situation?
Right. We have not, but we will. We have homework to do on that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see, just a little bit of information. The fire department is looking into buying a new pumper, which is in better shape than the one that we currently have, which is 305. Michael Bonk has approached me. They have accepted an offer. Arsen, Mike is probably going to go together with you to be able to try and kind of check for three or five percent of what the offer is, to be able to hold the truck. But a couple of people from the fire department and anybody from the board that wishes to go down, I believe it's going to be either Friday night or this Saturday. The plans are still in the works, or are going to be using the, want to get permission to be able to use the village car to be able to go down. It's about 400, a little over 400 miles away. Benny, are you aware of this?
Yeah, it's about that.
And you guys are probably going to spend the night, so either get reimbursed, or if one of the trustees go use your card to put it on the card, so they can spend the night and go down and take a look at this safer and better pumper.
Does Mike have a card? Card, Gene?
I'm not sure.
I don't think so. Are you going?
I'm, yeah, I'm thinking about going, and Fire Commissioner will go take a look at this truck.
Plus, I thought the fire company was paying for the 5% bid, or whatever it is.
He said to check with the village first, so that's what I'm doing. But I mean, it's coming out of his budget, so it really doesn't...
No, but you, we already had this discussion, I already had this discussion with him, and I believe he had this discussion with the mayor, and the mayor was going to contact all the trustees about what was happening. And the last I heard was this truck wasn't available till May of next year. Now, is this the same truck, or is it something different?
I'd take it it might be the same truck. It is the same truck, Benny?
So, in other words, we got to have three to five percent to hold the truck, if you guys...
Yeah, what the offer was.
If you guys like the looks of the truck, is that what you're doing? Are you going down with him, Benny?
No.
Okay.
Two other guys, I think Curly LeBumbard and Mike and...
I think Walt.
Walt, I think.
So, I guess that's something that we need to discuss with Mike, or whoever, discuss with Mike to see what...
But I think Arsen's right. I think the truck did not release until they get their new one.
Until they get the new one.
Well, they made them three offers.
Yeah.
They offered what they would pay them right now, if they leave one back, and then something about the first of the year, and then when the truck comes in.
Yeah.
So, they made them three offers. I don't, I, you know, that's all I've been told.
I wish Mike would be here.
And how did the money look on them? Give that cost unless you know what you're...
I thought the fire department was going to pay for it. I don't know. That's what we did before. Hey, Brian, when we went someplace, fire department always paid, and then they got reimbursed or whatever.
I think they're looking for the village to pay for this one.
Don't know.
That's what we had talked about before, was the village paying for the truck, and they do have the money for it, but I also had told him that he needs to go to the village board to get approval for this, because you don't want to go down, make an offer in a truck, and come back, and the village board doesn't want to pay for it, and you get, you're getting stuck. Someone's getting stuck paying a bill if you're not going to pay for it.
So, I'll get back with Mike before the end of the week, and call a special hearing.
Well, I think the board could approve the purchase of the truck. But when and when and how come is another question. But when and when and how come, that's another question.
There seems to be a lot of variance here.
Yeah.
I mean, why isn't Mike here? He should be here to present this to us.
I agree.
Would you be able to check with Mike tomorrow to find more details to see if the trustees came up 3% or 5%, whatever, or whether the department's coming up with it, and whether we're gonna get the truck in January, whether we're gonna get it in May? No, that's the only, as long as you guys, you guys probably gonna write a contract, I mean, and you damn it done the cut between now and then, the village has the right to back out, I mean, if something happens, whatever, so...
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, if they're still... What I was told, the deposit is fully reimbursable if he didn't like it at the time of delivery or whatever.
Okay, well, that's exactly...
Well, if they're still gonna be using it until they get a new one, they should drop the value down and get some of it.
That's probably what they...
That goes here, I think, the three, the three offers.
Right, okay.
Full value, you cut down some, and then cut down some.
Well, either way, we're still probably gonna go down and take a look at it on Saturday.
Sure, yeah.
So, approval to use the village card?
Not a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, and the expense of the people going down there?
Yeah, I mean, for the fire department, which is for the village.
Okay, okay.
I mean, someone's gotta go down and look at it, we can't buy...
How many people are going?
Four.
Four.
Four?
One carload.
One car. What is that, two rooms, Brad? You guys gotta spend the night down there?
Oh, yeah.
So you gotta have two rooms?
Yes.
And you're gonna use your card?
Okay, so, um...